The San Dimas City Council meeting and successor agency meeting will come to order for November 12th at 7:00. Please rise, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prior to oral communications, our city attorney has a statement.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to make this statement pursuant to the Brown Act about the agenda tonight. Item number CC8 on the consent calendar includes an amendment of the pay and benefit plans for city employees in the executive and confidential employee groups. It sets the salaries and benefits for those city employees at the levels listed in the staff report and the attachments. The recommendation in the staff report is to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, would you make an announcement about study session, please?
Yes, yes, Mayor. We will be reconvening back to the conference room after this regular council meeting to further discuss the revisions to the San Dimas tree preservation ordinance immediately following this meeting.
Thank you. That'll be prior to the closed session.
Correct.
Oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item, agenda item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any not, any item not appearing on this posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to a staff or set for a discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we have students from San Dimas High School with updates on campus life.
Thank you.
Manager, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Isa Martinez, the Executive Board Secretary at San Dimas High School. Alongside me, I am joined by Marina Vassino, Jacob Partis, Jaden Hanson, Emma and Sarah Foner, and Violet Robertson. Tonight, I'm here to tell you what has been going on with the Saints. Beginning with the arts. Drama had their first show of the season, The Bowling Collection. I myself attended and it was phenomenal. Our Royal Corps set a season record of the highest first regular season score being 84.2. They have received first place in Division 6A, received high general effect, and took second place overall. One of our Royal Corps members, Andrew Ward, auditioned and was placed in the tournament of the Roses Honor Band. Looking ahead at our upcoming Bonita Center of the Arts performances, we have our advanced dance class that will be having a dance show on November 21st at 7:00 PM, and our choir that will be having their winter concert on December 6th at 7:00 PM.
Moving on to athletics. Our football team is in the second round CIF. Game two is at home November 15th against Dana Hills at 7:00 PM. Go Saints! Our league champs for fall sports are tennis and volleyball being undefeated, and girls' golf being co-league champs. Onto our juniors, on, one of our juniors, Jocelyn River, is league MVP. Sophia Ingram, Mia Castaneda, and Jocelyn River qualified for CIF individuals. Great job to these stellar athletes. We have many winter sports that have started this week, and we will report on them next month.
In terms of academics, our AP testing season is approaching with close to 350 exams already ordered. Our career tech ed department has started a cybersecurity course that's up and running.
Finally, our activities. The San Dimas Homecoming Parade was a success. Over 500 people attended, according to the LA Sheriff's Department. Our homecoming dance was held at Hangar 21, and over 500 students danced the night away. Our ASB held two rallies this last month, our homecoming rally where we crowned our homecoming king, John Luke Bordeaux, and the fall rally where we honored our fall sports by playing numerous games and challenges. Our Foundations of Leadership class is continuing to host courageous conversations at SCHS, tackling conversations such as the need for in-school suspension, examining the equity in our current dress code, and student-driven support for EL students on campus. Also, make sure you book your calendars. Our dance team will be having an all-day fundraiser at Doghouse in Azusa on November 18th. Please go and support them. Thank you all for allowing me to give you this update, and we will see you next month.
Next speaker is Pete Slouis.
I just want to say something, just like as the student said, the second round of the CIF tournament is this Friday night. I'm quite sure that, I'd like to advise the city, members of the city council, that it's okay to wear a jacket, and maybe even long johns. It was pretty cold last Friday night, and I'm sure it's going to be just as cold this Friday night, but it's going to be great to see you all there. Thank you.
They actually deserve more than three minutes, to be honest, a big group like that.
I gave them, I gave them 10 seconds of yours.
Metro light rail, I was going to talk about. The funding, which has been big for me, to clear my, they've got complete funding now, so I'm kind of, my $60 million savings has kind of been trashed. I can't do that. And the Metrolink itself will be kind of a, is built with inadequacy, you know, with inefficiencies into it. But I did go to, I went on the light rail today. They do have a tap to exit now in Azusa. It's not really tap to exit, is people that are staying on the train have to tap a new tap card to get, to keep on the train, else they pull them off the train. So it's kind of similar, but they don't have the exact, they don't have the machinery to actually do that. They are armed guards now, and it was very safe. I mean, I felt this is the best I've ever seen it as far as safety goes, which they've made some good strides. What I was going to mention is there, there also now, the Foothill Transit is going to be putting a bus line. When they, when we get our new station, the San Dimas Station, there will be a new bus line going from our station to Cal Poly and to Mount SAC. So that'll be a new line. It'll help students, you know, from other cities coming into us and then busing out, or just for San Dimas residents, to have a bus for the students, for a high school, you know, or for a college, JC, students. There's a ton of graffiti still. Once you get on the light rail, it's, it's the worst I've ever seen as far as graffiti. And we'll probably be getting that, too. There are also, when it goes through Pomona, there is a Silver Street that stops there. So you might be able to still go to downtown on the Silver Street line, the bus line. So that might be something that people want to do. As far as Metrolink, they've converted from a commuter rail model to a regional peak model, a regional transit model. It's not working. People, there's nothing but complaints. I listened to the board meeting, and the people were very upset. I've seen some of the feedback they have gotten. They have a lot of cancellations, they have, trains are running very late, they're trying to run evenly throughout the day. A commuter rail was pretty much all going in the morning one way and all at night coming back the other way. Now they're trying to balance it. That's causing nothing but headaches because it's a single track, one thing, you know, they have one, one hiccup and everything else falls, cascades on down. But they're not going to change it, I'm sure. Ridership now, it's kind of interesting. Thirty percent of Metrolink is now student ridership. It's free, Student Adventure Pass. When you get to the Arrow Line, it's 50%. So they've really, the student activity has huge pickups, but the commuter activity is, is not being addressed, and they're, they're very upset, the paying customers. One lady talked, she had, she has to leave an hour and a half earlier because she can't afford to miss a train, there's so many delays to get to work, so you have to get there an hour and a half earlier, and she got home two hours later. So her day is just expanding, and she was, she was real upset. That's probably good enough. I won't get into the rest. Time has expired. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more speaker cards.
No more, Margie? You're standing up, so I figure you got something to say. And I took 30 seconds of your time.
Thank you. I'm Margie Green. I'm past president for the San Dimas Historical Society. I'm here to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing and where we are. We're located in the historic Walker House, 121 North San Dimas Avenue, on the second floor, up above Vincenzo's really nice restaurant. We're open on Tuesdays and Thursdays from noon to 3:00. The museum and the offices and the gift shop. We will not be there this Saturday because this Saturday, we're having a dinner, and this dinner is going to be really special. Our former mayor, Kurt Morris, is giving a presentation, which was given by Stanley Plummer, our very first mayor in San Dimas in 1967. It's a wrap-up of what had happened in the city of San Dimas for the first seven years of being incorporated. Kurt will be there, he will read this. We're having our dinner November 16th, that's Saturday. I know it's some people's birthdays, but we won't worry about that. It will be at 5:30, and we're at Faith Lutheran Church. They're kind enough, the Bible redemption gives us the space in the parish hall to have a nice dinner. They're very compatible on that. Our social hour is at 5:30, our dinner will be at 6:00. And Kurt should start reading, and he says it's about 20 minutes long, and that it's a fantastic presentation. I have not had the chance to read it, but I understand it's really, really good. If you would like to come to the dinner, you have to make reservations by noon tomorrow, and you can go online, and that's sandimashistorical.org. Sign into that, and then click on the button that says Events. The dinner is $38 a person if you're a member, a little bit more if you're not a member. Tonight, I have something for everybody, for, excuse me, not everybody, I'm sorry, didn't bring one for you, but for our new city manager and the city council. What it is, is a guide. This is put out by the Historical Society. We've run it before, and we just updated it. It's a guide to San Dimas historical sites. It has a lot of pictures in it. It has a map where to stop, where to read, what it's all about, and why it's there, and why we find it important. So I would like to give each of you that, and it also has an invitation for this Saturday's dinner, and believe me, it'll be a good program. So please try to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margie. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
Move of approval, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. That shows the end of the communication, or consent calendar. We'll move back to oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or may be determined by the chair.
Come on, Pete.
Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time?
Oh, my God. Yes!
Fairbox recovery now on Metrolink is in the teens. It's very low. I mean, they're spending 300 and some million, like $320 million a year, and they're receiving back like $50 million a year as far as fairbox recovery. That includes the Student Adventure passes, which are, I don't know why, how that gets into the budget, but they're getting credit for that. On the, on the Arrow Line, their expenditures are $15 million a year, and their total fairbox recovery is a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we're losing about $15 million a year. If I had a little line, it doesn't hardly do anything. It's good the students are riding it, they're pretty much the only, they're 50% of the volume of ridership as part of Metrolink. It goes, connects from San Bernardino to Redlands. But even Met, their new business model is, I have my suspicions. Thanks.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Mr. Brad McKinney, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Couple updates. The Horse Thief Canyon Park Trail construction began today to rehabilitate the walking path. The project's funded through the city's Measure A allocation, and construction is estimated to last approximately 45 working days. If you see work up there, that's what that is. The San Dimas Loop project continues. The city's contractor completed the initial earthwork removals of approximately 7,000 cubic yards of material. They're working on their foundation for the retaining walls that range up to 14 feet in height. The street section remains closed to the public during construction, which is anticipated to continue through the end of January 2025. Via Vicaro, east of San Dimas, south of Arrow Highway, a reconstruction project begins this week. The work is scheduled to be completed before Thanksgiving week, so should wrap up in that full week before Thanksgiving. There shouldn't be any issues of construction on that street. And lastly, the goal line contractor is set to pave Ucla Avenue between Benita Avenue and Second, Cataract Avenue between Arrow Highway and Railway Street, and Walnut Avenue from Arrow Highway to Benita Avenue, beginning the week of November 18th. Notices will be sent out to the residents this week informing them of these repaving projects. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none. City clerk, city attorney?
I have no legal reports, Mayor, but I do want to say that after a brief hiatus, I am very glad to be back. I'm glad to see all of staff, and glad to see all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said before the meeting, your assistant, assistant city manager did a great job, and we, we as a body want to make sure you thank him for us.
I will sure let him know. Thank you.
Members of the city council, council members who attended any event at the local expense of the agency, you have any reports? Seeing none, city, city council request for further items. Councilman Nacano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge the hard work of members of our community who put together the Veterans Day event yesterday. Pretty much the entire council attended. It was a good event, and we thank the Heroes Organization for putting that on. Additionally, I want to salute all of our veterans, since we, I didn't get a chance to do that last time, thank you for your service. I'm always amazed by how many people within the community have served our country to keep us safe and ensure that we continue to have the freedoms that we enjoy. And then I wanted to also call out, echoing Margie, that Historical Society is coming up. I'm looking forward to your annual dinner. I plan to be there. I always learn something new. So other members who might be watching on TV, I highly recommend joining the Historical Society or coming to an event. There's so much history within our city to learn, and it's a great way to get more involved. And then I, one other event I also want to acknowledge is Raymond Foster for the Rotary Club for putting on their annual dinner, raising money for, for members of our military, 29 Palms, as well as Camp Pendleton. Food insecurity is a real thing for members who are enlisted, and the organization has made it a priority to address their food insecurity by collecting donations, as well as raising funds, to ensure that everybody has a good holiday in food throughout the year. No other requests for agenda item. I did want to just ask, though, I know that we had talked about taking a look at the events calendar, and I'm wondering when that will be. I was, it was under the impression that it would happen sometime in October, November. Do we happen to know when that will take place?
Yes, Councilman Nacano, that's scheduled to be on the study session in the next meeting, sort of the second, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Weber?
I just want to say, I hope everybody had a good Veterans Day weekend. I certainly did. I was out of town a little bit, spent some time camping with the family, and, and out the dust and dirt of the desert, it was a great time for them, but the one downside of that was that I was just pulling back into town when the San Dimas Heroes had their Veterans Day event at Freedom Park, and I just want to acknowledge them, the work that they do, it's fantastic. That, that whole park is kind of under a little bit of turmoil right now with the construction going on nearby, but the work that they do does not go unnoticed. I appreciate everything that they do to honor our veterans here locally. And, you know, I was there in spirit, but unfortunately, I was in the midst of unpacking and cleaning myself up. We were a little dusty when we got back. And then also, I wanted to mention that I received news that another, one of our businesses in the Villa Verdi Shopping Center was burglarized last night, which was definitely frustrating to hear, but the good news that I wanted to share is that I truly believe that this type of crime is at its peak because voters of LA County resoundingly made their voices heard, and LA County will be tougher on crime moving forward thanks to the passage of Prop 36 and our newly elected DA. I really do look forward to how these tough-on-crime measures will impact the crime rates across the county, but here in San Dimas locally. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Protakos?
You never know. I never know if he's looking at me or at Councilmember Vienna. I just want to echo, happy Veterans Day to everyone. Thank you to all of our veterans and our active military for your service and your sacrifice, for without, we would not be enjoying the freedoms that we enjoy today. Our San Dimas Heroes did an incredible job honoring those veterans yesterday. Gary Enderly, Penny Stevenson, Laura Alvarado, and many countless others all came together to put on an incredible event. If anyone has not visited the monument, I encourage you to do so. I think you'll be surprised at all the names that you may recognize on the wall, and I think that's all I got right now.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vienna?
Sorry, Mayor, I was trying to make sure I got all your notes to cover all the events.
I'm sure you will.
I will. Number one is, I wanted to say thank you to everybody for a wonderful Halloween in the community. I drove down San Dimas Avenue this year, and as usual, San Dimas Avenue doesn't disappoint in the downtown area. I wish some of those kids would shake off to the rest of the neighborhoods. There's a lot of candy, I think, that got hoarded up in all the other places in town, but, you know, I do think that the downtown space has done a great job, and I think the volunteers, both from the city, the Sheriff's Department, and others, they help keep that corridor safe, do a great job to help out with that influx in people. So, good job to everyone that participated, and there were lots of fun decorations throughout the community that I was really appreciative to see. Also, since our last meeting, Councilmember Nacano and I attended the oath of office ceremony for Supervisor Kathryn Berger in her last term, and that was a wonderful ceremony. There was a lot of people in attendance. We were honored to represent the city, but, you know, really happy for Supervisor Berger, and, you know, can, really do appreciate her friendship and continued partnership for the support of this community and all the communities within the 5th District. I think she does an outstanding job in prioritizing the needs, and I will say, she is probably one of the, has the most accessible staff, I think, that do a really good job as well to be able to respond to constituents' requests, as well as the city. So, thank you, and as was shared at the Veterans Event...
It was nice to spend some time with you, too, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So, and as with that, you know, Supervisor Berger's office, for those that, if you are unaware, it moved over a year ago or so now. It's off of San Dimas Avenue, just above San Dimas Burger. So if you needed the supervisor staff for anything, you could visit there. They're very welcoming. Veterans, well, before Veterans Day, I will say, you know, I didn't think at 40, I'll be 41 on Sunday... be 41 on Saturday, as someone alluded to, thank you, Margie. I didn't think that I would have another student project, but I decided to go back and get another master's degree, and I just wanted to thank Councilmember Nacano for helping me with a student project last week, and, you know, I appreciated the time and I appreciated your willingness to help me out with that project, so thank you for that, and hopefully I get a good grade. I don't know yet, but I will let you know.
I'm waiting, just as you are, to see what happens, so.
Yeah. It was a very good, fun exercise, so I appreciate your time in that. And that being said, the Mosquito and Vector Control District, as most of you know, I am back and back in full force, and had the opportunity to attend that meeting on this past Friday. And I will tell you that, and I think I talked about it before, but something that's very fascinating that's going on in the mosquito world is that they have, and I think I alluded to it, area search warrants. And so we're actually doing cop stuff at the Mosquito, Vector, and Control District, which is pretty cool, so I've really perked up my ears lately about this. But basically, we've had some outbreaks or some cases of dengue in some of the communities in Baldwin Park and in El Monte, and so what that's resulted in is the Public Health Department working with the police departments and getting area search warrants to be able to go in and search for the source of the public health concern. So, pretty interesting thing in my experience in law enforcement professionally. I've not ever heard of somebody executing an area search warrant pursuant to public health, but that's happening. So I will say, as I've said before, tip-toss Thursday, all of your water, and make sure you're getting rid of any of your mosquito-standing water habitats that become breeding grounds for, for all of these types of things. And as was pointed out, we had an election. I, too, congratulate our incoming DA, Nathan Hockman. I think he, I've had the opportunity to personally, personally speak with him, and I think he's going to be a fantastic district attorney, and I, too, am excited for some of the measures that were passed overwhelmingly throughout this state that I think send a clear message that we do want to address public safety concerns and that the communities are, in fact, prioritizing that. All of that being said, I want to thank the San Dimas Heroes Organization as well as the city staff each year. You know, the city, the history of the Freedom Park, I think sometimes doesn't get talked about, but that is city property that was appropriated and allocated to serve as that place where that beautiful monument stands. And I also think sometimes it's not spoken that the city staff goes and puts a very large amount of time into the annual requests that go into that particular park, but also in the maintenance and preparation for Veterans Day and otherwise. So I just want to say thank you to the city staff for everything you guys have done as it relates to the DG and the landscaping and everything else that goes into that space. And I also want to thank the Heroes Organization, as well as every single veteran, including our two on the council, our Marine and our Seaman, who have served so well, so well and honorably, and yes, the Navy. There you go, Eric, that's what I meant. But nevertheless, thank you so much, and lastly, I just will say, Margie, I'm sorry, I don't think I'm going to make it Saturday, but I will check with my wife, and if it can happen, we'll see what we can do. I'll let you know by noon tomorrow. Cool. Thank you.
Got anything else you want to say? Well, maybe about 30 minutes from now. You know, I just, it's always interesting to hear my fellow council people, what they recognize, and then I, most of the time, I don't have to say anything because they cover everything so elegantly, but I do want to speak about the Heroes Program, the Veterans Program that we had yesterday. I remember years ago when this thing was being developed with Mr. Underly and Jenny Grave, and it, you know, there was talk about having here at City Hall, and there was other talk, but eventually, that, those people convinced us that you allow that to be built on, on the corner that it's on there, and they did a hell of a job, and they've done a nice job. What's amazing to me is, yesterday, at the end of that day, there were 1,299 names on that, on that wall, and they have room for more, but 1,299 residents or folks that have been associated with San Dimas put their name on their wall and were very, very proud to do it. You could see the group that was there, they, and put 38 additional names on it, and it was pretty, and we talk about birthdays, well, yesterday, or that day, was the 11th birthday of that monument, and I want to say happy birthday to that Heroes Group because it took a lot of work for them to do it. Okay? And as Ryan said, our city staff does what they need to do on all our parks, but with that park, a little bit more of their heart goes into it that day to make sure that everybody's proud of, to be there, and people come out, and there's a lot of thought, and yesterday was also, State Senator Susan Rubio was there, Representative Catherine Berger, and we should all be pretty proud of the work that was done. And I guess one of the other things that should be said was, by the way, November 10th was the birthday of the Marine Corps, the 249th birthday of the Marine Corps, hurrah! And I wanted to thank the Rotary and the Women's Clubs of all the various organizations around San Dimas, like Diamond Bar, Walnut, those people put forth a lot of effort in raising funds and raising food and toys for 29 Palms for the kids out there, and that was something that was very widely seen from people who have done, started this, doing this was Friday night, was their fourth annual, and the room was absolutely full, and I believe that the Rotary and that organization is going to have to look for a larger building to be able to get more people, but I understand they're looking for it, and I'll see you, hopefully see some of my council people there on the fifth annual. Thank you, Mr. Nacano, I saw you there, appreciate you being there, and thank you very much. All right. City Council will now be going into a closed session for real property negotiations, successor agency and city council closed session. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I thought we were continuing the, the study session related to trees and then the closed session.
You're absolutely right.
Every once in a while, thank you.
You seem to be more right than wrong anymore. We're going to go back into the hollow halls of the conference room and then complete the tree conversation, and so the study session concerning trees in San Dimas will start in 10 minutes. Wait a minute, let me look out here. Will start in five minutes. Thank you.